Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for a pledge, and after the pledge, please remain standing.
My final allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and its good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. For Sally Ann Baurlick, who we lost this past week at the age of 96, and as pointed out in her obituary, very few people knew that she was 96 because she lived life to the fullest. Lived life to the fullest as a true volunteer, 50 years through the ambulance corps, which included making active calls at the age of 82. Her second year on the corps way back in 1965, I believe, she delivered her first baby. And when I went to the viewing, I guess I just missed that baby, not so much of a baby anymore coming out, but they kept the relationship for so many years. And even up until, I think, just two years ago, she was still volunteering for the Red Cross, greeting people, donating blood. So, a true inspiration to all in Madison, a moment for Sally Ann and her family. I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of March 27, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections?
I gave my...
They've been submitted. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all on this beautiful evening. Couple of comments before a couple of proclamations, but tomorrow is a special day. Tomorrow is Liz Osborne, our clerk's birthday, so let's all say happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Liz.
Eagles and fruit for everyone in the morning.
I want to thank probably close to 150 residents and neighbors that joined us on April 3rd for discussions around the welcoming resolution and the spirited conversations that happened in the breakout groups. It was a, once again, as I said at closing that night, an example of how Madison works together in a positive way. We've got a lot of work to do as far as next steps, but what I'm looking at right now, and I'll have more details in the coming weeks, is looking at some of the feedback from the breakout groups and creating smaller groups to work on various topics that can, you know, things that really we could have been doing all along and will help us become stronger. For example, we heard from more than one group about the idea of an International or Diversity Appreciation Day, so we could have a small group of residents working on that. We had a, from multiple groups, the idea of, wouldn't it be great to bring back a welcome wagon? So, not only a welcome wagon, which normally was based directed towards homeowners, but a welcome wagon of some sort, because that's probably trademark, a group that could welcome all those renters, maybe even, you know, we already welcome the Drew students to town with the annual tour, but things on how we reach out to newcomers to Madison. And it was a great, I think everyone on both sides and in the middle on all the issues learned from each other, so it was a great evening. Last Wednesday was a very special night in Madison, probably several in this room I know were there at the rededication mass at St. Vincent Martyr Church. It was a beautiful job in the parish, should be very proud of what has been done in that church. As I pointed out, that was where I was, received my first communion, and it looks a lot more like way back when, but updated, it's a beautiful outcome. And this past Saturday, we had hundreds of children downtown on an Easter egg hunt, the annual Chamber Commerce Easter egg hunt, which always brings lots of people into the stores as they collect their eggs, and it was a great turnout. And looking at next week, next Wednesday, a week from today is a special day. Our own Bob Landergan is receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Boy Scouts, and it's recognizing not only his effort for, as a council member here, and all the work you've done on behalf of our residents, but your work for the ambulance corps for so many years, auxiliary police, and of course, as our OEM coordinator, and not just taking care of things as, things like Sandy hit or surprise storms, but making sure we get our reimbursements from FEMA. So it is a well-deserved reward, and just as a reminder, even though it's called Lifetime Achievement, doesn't mean you get to quit.
Thank you.
All right. And next week, or week from Saturday, is the annual Little League Parade, a little bit later than normal because of where Easter fell, and actually probably thankful with that late March snow. But this year's parade will be recognizing the 50, or rather, 65th anniversary of the start of Madison Little League, so 12 noon, starting downtown, so be there to congratulate Little League on 65 years. And our employee for the month of April is Robert Cirillo, and everyone, no one probably knows Robert Cirillo, more, better known as Bo Cirillo of the Public Works, who donated his time Saturday to clean and polish all the floors in the various offices of the Public Works building, and probably has not been done quite a while. All right, let me get a sip of water, and I'm going to come down, and a couple of proclamations. First proclamation is on autism awareness, and I think many of us last Monday, I believe, I had Blue On last Monday, was wearing that for autism awareness. Don't mean to shoot me, come on up. Whereas autism is a pervasive development disorder affecting the social communication behavior skills of those affected by it, and whereas, as more professional, more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 nationally, and 1 in 41 children in New Jersey. And whereas there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives, and whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present, and whereas Autism New Jersey is spearheading an awareness effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim April 2017 as National Autism Awareness, Acceptance, and Understanding Inclusion Month, and urge all residents to become better educated about autism and to create a better community for individuals with autism. Thank you for your efforts on this great program to make everything aware and help with families.
Thank you. All right. I am very humbled to accept this proclamation on behalf of your town, Madison, and on Autism New Jersey and the autistic population. I am very grateful of you for answering my mother's letter, and I would like to share a speech. The disability known as autism is one that has had its opinions and definitions changed throughout the decades. At first, it was seen as freakish and frowned upon in the 1950s throughout the 80s, then it was seen as a phenomenon that was genetic, or maybe a disease or a trait. Now it is seen as a roadblock disability that hampers relationships and language for people who have it. Hello, my name is Peter Fivefoot, and for me, it has always been the same. It is a disability that has been of difficulty for me when, growing up in my world and learning skills and socializing, but with help and support of adults such as my parents, teachers, and others, as well as respect from fellow peers and friends, the struggle has not been so difficult. However, in this month, recognizing this disability, we must come to realize what autism truly is. It is a roadblock, but on the highway where there is one, good Samaritans and first responders will do their part to fix the roadblock. Same must be done here. First, the community and the people must embrace and willingly help the person with this disability. Second, we must realize that the word disability implies that there is an ability that has been disabled. Therefore, the community and town must do their part to unlock the hidden contribution to society that this person has. Lastly, the community must assist the people, especially the autistic people, so they can realize their dreams and not discourage them, as my family has let me dream. I am also aspiring to go to college to be a sports broadcaster or a lawyer. Remember, it takes a village to raise a child. Thank you.
Peter, thank you so much for coming, because my proclamation can only go so far. Your words have really helped people understand what it's all about, and we know you will be successful in college, and listen, look forward to hearing you on the airwaves when you, as you broadcast sports. So, best of luck, and just so you know that this, these meetings are broadcast on cable throughout Madison later this week, and people can see it on the web, worldwide web, so your word will be spread to many. So, thank you again for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Did I leave the other one up there?
Over here.
Oh, there it is, yeah. I'm breaking my routine here. Corporal Kunkavas, please come forward. This is another very important proclamation, and to raise awareness this month, but also throughout the year. It was very interesting. I read in the Star Ledger last week, I think on the first day of the month, there was in one town, a officer in a car with the primary job of looking for distracted drivers, and his car was hit by a distracted driver. So it is, there's too much going on in our lives, but when we're behind the wheel, we have to give it 100 percent. Whereas distracted driving occurs when a driver is diverting their attention away from the task of driving to focus on another activity, and whereas inattention and driving distractions can result in injuries and deaths to motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and whereas distracted driving, such as cell phone talking and texting while driving, is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable. And whereas the health and well-being of our citizens are a direct result of increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving, and whereas in order to reduce the number of crashes as well as improve driver safety, motorists should dedicate themselves to adopting and maintaining self-safe behavior behind the wheel. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim April 2017 as Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to increase their awareness of the dangers of distracted driving. Thank you for your effort. Would you like to say a few words?
Really wasn't planning on it, but it was a great speech, by the way. Just remember that the nice weather is coming out, make sure you stay off your phones, it could save a life.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Municipal Utilities Authority has listed all of their drop-off events for hazardous household hazardous waste in computer TVs. The first date is Saturday, June 3rd, the second date is Saturday, September 23rd, and then Saturday, October 28th. It runs from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., and it's at the Morris County Public Safety Training Academy, 500 West Hanover Avenue in Parsippany. So, if you have any of these particular waste, or computers, or whatever, this is a good time to get rid of them. From DPW, the Mechanical and Fleet Services have been, they've been attending safety classes. They've started on all of the equipment that is going to be necessary to keep all of the grass mowed, so all of the mowers are up and running, and they've started working on a lot of the fields. They've been working on electric department vehicles, and they always have scheduled maintenance on all the borough fleet, as well as, including the Borough, the Board of Health. The Road Department, they've been installing four-hour parking signs throughout the borough as directed by the police, and they are working with the Sewer Department on manhole replacements, so if you see the orange cones in different areas, you know that they are replacing those manholes. They're also asking, they've been out doing potholes and patchwork, so, but if they're missing any, you could call the DPW and let them know about one that maybe they had missed. The Parks Department is working and getting all the fields ready for baseball, which will be starting on the 22nd. They put out all the town benches now, and they're working with the DDC on various requests, keeping downtown looking organized, so they're painting trash cans, light poles, street markers. They've also started to paint all the fields for the soccer and lacrosse teams. During the heavy rains, the Sewer Department was deployed to storm inlets all over town. This has proved helpful during downpours as we try and prevent any flooding in town. Cleaned all the storm inlets down to the floors on the proposed roadways that are scheduled for paving, and they started the new manhole replacement on scheduled roadways that will also be repaved. I just want to say one thing about, I guess about a month ago, we had a presentation by the SEAL Company, who is doing an energy audit, and we gave them permission to come in, and I think the Environmental Commission was the one that started that particular program. It's $49. So I decided that I was going to have an energy audit on my house and see exactly how it worked, so I was better prepared to answer questions. I have to tell you, I've worked with a lot of professionals. These people are extremely professional, got an extremely good report, and they sat down with us for about an hour and explained different items that could potentially be problems in our home. And my husband and I decided that we're going to take some of their advice, so if anybody, it was probably the best $49 that I've spent in a very long time, so, think about it. They, like I said, they're, the guy that came to did, and did the complete inspection was absolutely, never even knew he was there hardly. He didn't interfere with our lives at all, and it's just a very professional group. I think you would enjoy having it, so I encourage you. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, and just a reminder, for those that, since you mentioned the four-hour parking limit signs going up, on RoseNet is a FAQ on the four-hour parking limits, give you a better understanding. I know there's a lot of concerns that it may limit your ability to park on your street, but take a look at that, and I think that will help you understand why it's being done, and that you will probably be in good shape as far as your routines you've always had. Public Safety, Mr. Landergan.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, on March 27th and 28th, the Madison Police Department and the Madison Board of Education partnered to present the Every 15 Minutes Program to the students at Madison High School, which was dedicated to Billy and Ashley Strider of Florham Park. Billy and Ashley's lives were tragically cut short on April 5th, 2003, by a drunk driver on the Garden State Parkway. We have taken this opportunity to educate Madison High School students about the consequences of impaired and distracted driving in a dramatic and realistic fashion. Every 15 minutes is designed to instill the potentially dangerous consequences of drinking alcohol among all teenagers. While primarily targeted toward preventing alcohol-related traffic injuries and fatalities, the program is also designed to challenge students to think about drinking, personal safety, and the responsibility of making mature decisions when lives are involved. Chief Datchison would like to thank the following for their assistance in the program: Madison Fire Department, Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Atlantic Health, the Falco's Towing, as well as the School Resource Officer, Vincent Galgano, and Corporal Bart Glab, who devoted an enormous amount of time coordinating all the program. One final thank you to the Strider family, who heartfelt message was received by all. During the past week, the Madison Police took possession of our new handheld radios as part of the 2017 Capitol budget expenditure. The new motorola radios will be replacing 13-year-old radios that are failing frequently and will enhance our communication ability that merges respondents during multi-agency scenes. Excuse me. On March 27th, the Madison Police Department welcomed back Patrolman Sean McCarthy, who returned from active military duty from his Navy deployment to the Horn of Africa. Patrolman McCarthy was deployed as part of the anti-piracy peacekeeping mission that started January 8th, 2016. And finally, the Madison Police Department recently, was recently awarded a $5,500 grant toward the You Drive, You Text, You Play Distracted Driving Campaign. During the month of April, officers will be aggressively patrolling our streets, looking for distracted drivers who will be issue, and will be issuing summonses for those violations. Motorists are reminded to use handheld free device if a call is necessary. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Bureau Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Jim Burnett and his staff, Ray Cody, for the budget that we have before us tonight, the resolution, and I'm hoping the council, you've given great input and discussion, that we can pass it unanimously this year. That would be great. And residents are encouraged to visit the annual budget process page on RoseNet, where they can look at more about the budget, including information that was given to the council and discussed at various public meetings over the last six months. From the Payroll Department, it continues to work on shifting over from our prior payroll processing firm to PrimePoint. Transition is going well, the administration anticipates increased productivity and reduced costs from this transition. The Audit Committee will be meeting on April 24th to meet with the auditor, the administrator, and CFO to discuss internal controls, financial reporting, and risk management practices. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. As my fellow council members know, the last thing I would do is to presume how they might vote on a resolution. However, if they do vote in favor of 122-2017, which is on our list tonight, there will be a utility dividend granted to all our residents. This dividend will equate to a 7.5% reduction on the electric portion of your bill, and it will run from May 2017 through April 2018. You should note that a page was recently added to RoseNet titled, Understanding Your Residential Utility Bill. Pretty self-explanatory, and various components of the bill are explained on that page in detail, so by all means, check it out, and I'm assuming and I'm optimistic that this dividend will be approved. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Utility Advisory Committee met last week, and among other things, they discussed possible improvements to the water quality report. I've been mentioning that water quality report from time to time. As you know, it is sent to your homes, and it's something you can look at. Some of the suggestions that came up at that meeting were quite good, and the Water Department is looking into whether and if they should be implemented. The other item that came up was to look at much more substantive changes to the utility bill, and it's been agreed that a review should be taken, and if indeed approved, the Finance Department will work with the billing software company, and the expectation would be that we'd have a new bill format by September. Not a guarantee, but fingers crossed. From the Water Department, we have a sign of spring. They turn the water on at the community pool. Always nice to tell you, always nice to hear. Besides that, there were a few things not particularly out of the ordinary. They replaced a hydrant at King's Road at the KRE project, they tested out the emergency generators at the wells, and they put in a backflow preventer between Fairleigh Dickinson University and the Madison Water Department. And otherwise, the other items of the last two weeks have been on order of regular maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Mr. Mayor, I have a report this evening.
All right. Media Fairness, Ms. Byrne.
Okay. First, from the Recreation Department, the Third Annual Madison Avenue Challenge will be held at Dodge Field on 4/19, that's next Wednesday, with Drew and FDU squaring off in baseball. The first pitch is at 6:00 p.m. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, the Madison Little League Parade, Pancake Breakfast and Pictures will be held on Saturday, 4/22, but I feel it is imperative upon me to mention that over 300 girls softball players will also be marching in the parade. From the Downtown Development Commission and the Madison Chamber of Commerce, the Home Show 2017 Annual Chamber Home Show is scheduled for Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Madison Junior School. The change in location will provide more space and Main Street exposure. The sponsors this year are Pipe Works, Jaeger Lumber, Kits and Company, and Lakeland Bank. Independent Bookstore Day and International Tabletop Day is a new event for Madison planned for Saturday, April 29th, organized by Short Stories and promoted by the Downtown Development Commission. Independent Bookstore Day and International Tabletop Day will be celebrated, bringing hundreds of families, readers, and gamers to downtown Madison. From 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., we'll be hosting authors and other book-related events inside Short Stories and on Green Village Road. Green Village Road will be closed to traffic, so that tents, tables, and chairs can be set up to accommodate the tabletop games, so if you're good at Monopoly, come on down on the 29th. May Day, which is one of the premier events here in Madison, is scheduled for Saturday, May 6th. T-shirt sponsorships, being accepted, too late. The t-shirt art contest winter will be announced this week. We need volunteers. It takes almost 1,000 people to clean up the down, all the downtown areas that May Day cleans and spruces up, so please, if you have time on Saturday, the 6th, sign up at The Chamber Annual Awards Dinner is scheduled for Monday, June 5th, at the Madison Hotel, and of course, what everyone's been waiting for, Opening Day of the Farmer's Market will be Thursday, June 1st. The Madison Downtown Development Commission is preparing for its 25th season of the Madison Farmer's Market. The market located on Central Avenue between Main Street and Cook Avenue will run from the 1st through Thursday, October 26th, which extends the season by two weeks, so more time to get your pumpkins. Market hours will be again, be 2:00 to 7:00, and we are looking forward to another great season. And finally, a group has been meeting in Madison since August 2016 to discuss the idea of the beloved community, the concept that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. espoused with the focus of eradicating homelessness, hunger, and poverty. They have expanded the conversation to include other issues that impact the health and safety of our community. On April 25th and/or April 27th at 7:00 p.m. at the Madison Y, they will continue the dialogue, and the group is reaching out to everyone in the community to come to one of those evenings and become a part of the discussion. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just a little clarification, that meeting may happen at the Kirby Center.
Oh, okay.
But word will be shared once we figure out the details. But word will be shared once we figure out the details.
Okay.
All right. We now move on to our budget hearing. We'll be opening up the meeting to the public for opportunity to ask questions or make comments on the proposed municipal budget, and also will include on this, in the hearing, the resolution on the utility dividend rates. Anyone wishing to comment on those two, either of those two items, please step forward to the lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Motion for Resolution 121, the Resolution of Borough of Madison, finally adopting the 2017 Budget and Tax Resolution.
Mayor, I move R. 121-2017.
I'll second.
Counsel discussion.
Great budget.
Yes. Budget and...
Yeah.
You know, this was, this was the first time I participated in the budget discussions as, as immersed as a council person can get. And I was amazed at the amount of data that we were given, and the amount of input we were given. And I, and I really commend Jim Burnett, I commend Ostry Bailey. I think we, I think we really crafted a very good, tight budget that allowed for things like capital improvements, and also the electric dividend that we've been talking about for so long. So, I guess it sounds like I'm patting myself on the back a little bit, but I think it's a, it's a good thing.
We can all give ourselves a pat in the back. Any other comments in the council? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Ah, gotcha.
I saw Jim staring at me.
All right. Motion for Resolution 122, 2017, Resolution of the Borough of Madison, establishing the 2017-2018 utility dividend rates.
Mayor, I move Resolution R. 122-2017.
I second the resolution.
Any council discussion?
So, I'll say two things. One, I'm, you know, very happy that we're able to allow the, the community to keep another million and a half dollars this year, and I hope we'll be able to continue this in the future. This is obviously something I've cared about for a long time. I will say, I've not been happy with the term dividend, because a dividend is something that you pay to stockholders. We're not, we don't have stockholders, and we're not paying anybody. We're actually cutting the rate, so I still prefer that we sort of truth it in government, and it's really an annual rate reduction. But I'm just happy that we're giving people back some of their money.
And for the record, Pat, I agree. I've preferred rate adjustment.
Okay.
To speak to the winning side, I prefer dividend, because we've been talking about putting our utilities on the same footing as a business. And I, I felt that we should start thinking about the utility in that way. So as in any business, if you have a good year, you declare a higher dividend. If you have a poor year, you may have no dividend at all. But we're not so much, I don't look at it as adjusting the rate as much as I look at it as declaring a dividend. To me, an adjustment in rate is permanent. Dividends vary over time. Hopefully, this one won't vary a lot, but there's no way to predict that. Thank you.
And it's a million and a half. That's the bottom line. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Communication petition.
None received, Mayor.
All right. We're now on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to what you can discuss. There are no agenda discussions tonight, so the only things you can comment on this section or any of the resolutions are part of the consent agenda. So if you wish to comment on any of those, please step to lectern, state the resolution number you wish to discuss, and try to keep your comments or questions to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting. As mentioned, there are no agenda discussions tonight. Excuse me. Clerk, please read the statement on ordinances for hearing.
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, March 27th, 2017. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up the ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 13, 2017, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled "Water" to update the water connection fee schedule.
I open the hearing for ordinance 13. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 13-2017.
Second.
Counsel discussion. Please note that this, I'm sorry, no, never mind. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 13-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 14, 2017, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled "Sewer" to update the sewer connection fee schedule.
I open the hearing for ordinance 14. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 14-2017.
I second the ordinance.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 14-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we move on to invitations for discussion, invitation for discussion number two. So this is when you can't make comment on anything. Same rules are in effect as far as step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and please write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Hi, Council. Kathy Daly, 20 West End Avenue. I do have some comments and questions of my own, but if I may be allowed to, I'd like to start off with some correspondence that went back and forth between another constituent of yours and, and the council, Mr. Dave Carver. This is about Resolution 57-2017, and the correspondence went back and forth right around the time that the resolution was discussed and adopted by this, this body. I guess it started on February 5th, and it went back and forth, and he got answers to his questions by February 7th. So I would like to just read that into the record, because I do have some questions, too, that sort of follow-up from where the conversation with him left off, if that's okay. I do, there's nothing confidential in here, and I did get Mr. Carver's permission as well. So, with your leave? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Carver's first question was regarding Provision Number 7 of the resolution. So he, he has the question, the resolution section, then the question, and then the answer. So I'll read it in that order, and then if that's, if it's okay, I do have a question about the answer you provided to him, so I'll just go through that at that time. So, first of all, the resolution, resolution section reads, "Borough employees and officials shall monitor any efforts by the federal government to withhold or withdraw federal funding as a result of the borough's policies to protect and defend the rights and liberties of all its residents, and shall take action to protect such funding." So Mr. Carver's question was, how much federal funding does the borough currently receive that could be at risk due to this resolution? What is the source? How are the funds used? And what actions would be taken to protect this funding? And then the answer that he received back, again through Mr. Cody from this body, was, "On an annual basis, the borough receives very little in federal funding. The fire department pursues grant funding for equipment from the Aid to Firefighters Grant Program, and engineering is currently applying for $80,000 in federal funds from the Morris County Community Development Block Grant Program, which is funded by HUD for a road project. Bob Landrigan has also been successful in the past securing reimbursement from FEMA after major storms and weather events. The actions taken to protect that funding would be up to the governing body, but I'm sure would include involving our congressional delegation in the effort." So my follow-up question to that is, are we planning, if we do see a situation where federal funding is withdrawn or withheld, do we intend to initiate any litigation? Are we planning to sue the federal government? So that's, that's my question to you. And I don't know whether you want to have a dialogue now, or...
No, it's, yeah, we've typically, we don't get in a dialogue, or guys will look at, to our attorney, if there's anything in that statement that, in that, in the resolution that puts our, truly puts our funding in jeopardy.
No, I do not believe it does put your funding in jeopardy, as we've opined. The resolution states that you have to comply with all federal, state laws, directives, and Attorney General guideline directives. And that's first and foremost, and that's what your, your law enforcement officers have to do in terms of jeopardizing federal funding. What that says is that if there's an attempt to have your federal funding jeopardized, you would take action to, to make sure that you're protecting your citizens from that funding. I do not believe that that resolution in any way, shape, or form jeopardizes your federal funding. It is a, there is repeated statements in there that you are absolutely following federal law, and you have to follow federal law. That's the mandate. Everyone in this chamber, your police officers, everyone takes an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that is reflected in that resolution. So I'm confident that you're not going to have any issues from the federal government jeopardizing your federal funding.
Okay, thank you. And then a follow-up question I would have then is...
Your three minutes are, are over. We don't get into cross dialogue, so I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Yep.
Okay. I do have, I do have a whole lot more, but that's, that's all right if my three minutes are over. But I think, with regard to the litigation, I guess my, my question is, is there any cost-benefit analysis? Is this conditional on a cost-benefit analysis, or you just dive right into the litigation? That's, that's...
I think the, I think that's my answer, as far as there is no litigation, really.
Okay. And there's really very little funding also that would be at stake.
Right, yeah.
All right. So I do then question, in its entirety, why seven would be included here. But I do understand my three minutes are over, and I've only gotten through one of the three questions and answers that you went back and forth with Mr. Carver on. So I'll defer to you, Mayor.
Yep, and as, yep, and we'll, we'll put together that, the, the follow-up meeting that we've been talking about as far as, group together, we can cover those, and as appropriate, we'll share it to a, a greater group after that.
Okay. I apologize for having taken up so much.
That's quite all right. It's very important to, to hear your concerns and to have them addressed. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinances scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for May the 8th, 2017. All be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
Okay, I'll call up ordinances for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 15, 2017, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 190 of the Borough Code entitled "Water" to change the billing method for residential water meters.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 15-2017.
Mayor, I second it.
This is the one I was meant to make, almost made a comment too soon. This was a reintroduction, because we made a major change to the ordinance that had already been introduced. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 16, 2017, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $110,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for canopy, fuel, area, tank monitoring, and tank maintenance improvements at the Public Works Facility.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 16-2017.
I second that motion.
Counsel discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
And ordinance 17, 2017, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, naming Street Meadow Court.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 17-2017.
I second that motion.
Counsel discussion? And for those didn't see, this is a, off of Shunpike, a small development, but that will create a new road. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 123-2017 to Resolution 138-2017.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, but I abstain from Resolution 125-2017.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes, but I'm abstaining from Resolution 126.
And Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Okay, the vouchers. The current fund, $250,841.88. General capital fund, $251,919.85. Electric operating fund, $153,772.53. Electric capital fund, $111,751.97. The water operating fund is $12,423.79. And the trust, $102,799.14. Total is $883,509.16.
Mayor, I, I move the approval of the vouchers.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no new business.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?